Good evening. I'd like to call to order Village of Riverside Board of Trustees Regular Meeting of Thursday, March 6, 2025. Please join me and stand as you are able for the pleasure of the ladies.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, one power, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk Stenzel, please call the roll.
President Pollak?
Here.
Trustee Matteo?
Here.
Trustee Clarity?
Here.
Trustee Evans?
Here.
Trustee Cos?
Here.
Trustee Gallagos?
Here.
Manager Francis?
Here.
Attorney Pickrell?
Here.
Also President, Clerk Stenzel.
We have a quorum for our meeting tonight. President's report, upcoming meetings, March 10 is a sesquicentennial ad hoc committee meeting here at the Village Hall, March 11 Landscape Advisory Commission again at the Village Hall, March 12 Economic Development Commission at the Village Hall, March 13 Preservation Commission Village Hall, March 17 Historical Commission Village Hall, March 18 Planning and Zoning Commission Riverside Village Hall, and our next board meeting is two weeks from night, tonight, March 20, again at the Village Hall. Upcoming events and activities, I'll remind everyone again of the sesquicentennial winter photo contest will be open until Thursday, March 20, so you have two weeks. Photos should feature winter in Riverside and reference any unique recognizable aspect of Riverside's landscape or architecture. You can see the entry form for this event on the village's website. Also, this weekend is the great puzzle race. I announce it, but at the same time, I have to tell you that the event is sold out. So that's a good thing that we have an event that is of great interest to the residents. This event is, you can check it out on social media if you want to know more about it. It is a puzzle race to put together a puzzle of the general plan of Riverside. That concludes my president's report. Manager Francis?
Thank you. I have two quick items. I just want to remind residents and the public that we still have a street sign drawing that's being held. You can purchase your tickets online until March 10, or you can purchase them in person, but there is a listing on the village website of the various different signs that are available. So if you're drawn as part of the drawing, you get to pick whichever signs are currently available. So it'll go within the order of who gets drawn first. They'll get first choice, second will get second choice, so on and so forth. So make sure you go out and purchase your tickets. The other item I wanted to mention is standard and poor reaffirm the village's AAA-plus rating, and so I wanted to congratulate the village board, Director Zavala, and village staff on this accomplishment. There's a lot of work that goes into bond ratings, not just your regular call with the rating agency, but also just good, sound financial practices that the village has to do on an annual basis. That is all I have this evening.
Thank you, Manager Francis, and congratulations to you and your staff, as well as the board on that bond rate or credit rating. That's a major accomplishment for our village. Consent agenda. Clerk Stenzel, please read the consent agenda. Oh, I'm sorry. I skipped over resident comments. Is there anyone in attendance who wants to speak on a non-agenda item? If it's on the agenda, you'll have a chance to speak at that time. Yes, sir?
My name's Joe Wise. I was here on the 20th. I gave you a petition. I didn't make a copy of it, so when I heard we're having another meeting, I went and made another petition. There's some duplicate names, but there's also some additional names on here. There's some names on the other petition that I didn't get on this petition. It's about not having a basketball court constructed in Blythe Park. And I have another meeting to go to, so I'm going to give this to you. I've got a copy of it this time. Thank you, and I appreciate the time, all of you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I've got a couple other people who are going to talk about it, so I will leave that to them, and I'll get to my other meeting. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything on a non-agenda item?
I spoke last time along with Joe.
Please come to the microphone, sir. Please come to the microphone and introduce yourself.
My name is Greg Ostrowski. I'm a resident of Riverside on Kent Road, and I spoke last time. I don't think I need to reiterate what we said. I'm waiting to hear what the Parks and Recreation Regular Meeting has said. Okay?
Okay. When is the next Parks and Rec Regular Meeting?
Just a moment. The 31st?
March 31st. March 31st, sir. It's at the Quincy, or it's at the library.
It's at the library.
March 31 at the Public Library, Riverside Public Library, at 7:00 PM. Thank you. Anyone else on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, now Clerk Stenzel, please call the roll.
Consent agenda. That's fine. I'm testing me. Approved bachelor list of bills, March 6, 2025. Approved Village Board of Trustees Regular Meeting Minutes, February 20, 2025. Review and File Board and Commission Minutes, Riverside TV Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, September 9, 2024. Parks and Recreation Board Regular Meeting Minutes, January 27, 2024. Planning and Zoning Commission Regular Meeting Minutes, January 22, 2025. Review and File Department Monthly Reports. Parks and Recreation Quarterly Report, Fourth Quarter 2024, and Parks Recreation 2024 Year in Review. Community Development, February 2025. A resolution authorizing village manager to issue a purchase order to Conway Shield for the purchase of nine sets of firefighter turnout gear in an amount not to exceed $25,000. A resolution authorizing the sale or disposal of personal property owned by the village of Riverside.
Do any of these items need to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, could I please have a motion to approve, a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda? Motion and a second. Clerk Stenzel, please call the roll.
Trustee Matteo?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Cos?
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Consent agenda is approved. Department Board and Commission Reports, we have no scheduled Department Board or Commission Reports this evening, so we'll move on to pending business. Pending business, item 9A, it's been slight change in the title of this ordinance, so I will let Attorney Pickrell read the title, and then Jessica, or Manager Francis, will explain.
The title was written in the original agenda. It was "An Ordinance Providing for the Issuance of Not to Exceed $6.2 Million in General Obligation Bonds, Water Works and Sewerage System Alternate Revenue Source Series 2025 of the Village of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, for the Purpose of Paying the Costs of Improving the Waterworks and Sewerage System of Said Village and for the Payment of Expenses Incident There Too, Providing for the Collection, Segregation, and Distribution of the Revenues of Said System, Providing for the Levy and Collection of a Direct Annual Tax Sufficient for the Payment of the Principal of and Interest on Said Bonds, and Authorizing the Sale of Said Bonds to the Purchaser thereof." As revised, the amount, consistent with the original title, the amount has been reduced to less than $6.2 million, so it is now reads "An Ordinance Providing for the Issuance of $6,65,065,000 in General Obligation Bonds, Water Works and Sewerage System Alternate Revenue Source Series 2025 of the Village of Riverside, Cook County, Illinois, for the Purpose of Paying the Costs of Improving the Waterworks and Sewerage System of Said Village and for the Payment of Expenses Incident There Too, Providing for the Collection, Segregation, and Distribution of the Revenues of Said System, Providing for the Levy and Collection of a Direct Annual Tax Sufficient for the Payment of the Principal of and Interest on Said Bonds, and Authorizing the Sale of Said Bonds to the Purchaser thereof."
Thank you. Manager Francis, or do you want to turn that over to Finance Director Zavala?
Thank you. The draft ordinance was included with the packet previously, and this morning we had a successful bond sale, which then is in need of the new bond ordinance, which includes the successful bidder information and the total amount of the sale. So it was a competitive bidding process with a total of five bidders for the sale of this debt totaling $6,65,065,000. We have Anthony Mazzelli here from Spear Financial to tell us a little bit more about the bond sale, and we also have Kent Flores here from Chapman and Cutter to answer any questions that you have about the ordinance. And the ordinance has been printed out for you, and it's on the table on the media agenda.
Thank you, Director Zavala.
Good evening. Anthony Mazzelli with Spear Financial. We conducted the competitive open auction of the village's general obligation alternate revenue source bonds this morning. And as was mentioned, we received a total of 11 bids from five bidders through that open auction process, with the best bid coming from Robert W. Baird and Company out of Milwaukee, Wisconsin. The original bid was a 3.979% on the issuance. After the bids were received, we resized the issue in order to accomplish the $6 million in project proceeds. That is what prompted the change to the par amount to $6,65,000. The final rate being 3.9731%. Overall, the bids ranged from that low bid to a high bid of 4.1861%. So fairly tight bidding between the five bidders. Happy to see five underwriters come in. It shows good demand for the bond issue this morning, which is due to, in many parts, to the high bond rating, which was, you know, as a process of this, we have to go to S&amp;P to have that rating affirmed and assigned to this new bond issue. So they do an overall review of the district's credit, and then assign a new rating, and then affirm the rating on the existing bonds of the village. And that AA-plus bond rating was affirmed and leads to the interest rates that you saw today. So happy to answer any questions about the sale, and then Kent's here for any legal questions about the ordinance.
Before we get to any questions, I just would like to say that people wonder sometimes, they ask me, why do we make such a big deal about our credit, our bond rating? Well, we just see 135,000 reasons why. We've just saved $135,000 by getting a very low interest rate on our bonds. So thank you, Spear Financial, and everyone else who helps us with this. Any questions for staff or for our consultant? Seeing none, someone like to make a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll make a motion.
And I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Any public comments on this matter? Seeing none, Clerk Stenzel?
Trustee Matteo?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Cos?
Aye.
Trustee Gallagos?
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you. Next, under pending business, discussion relating to licensing of a vending machine on public property at Riverside Train Station. Assistant Manager Monroe?
Thank you. Good evening. This is a continuation of a discussion begun at the January 16 meeting regarding an interest from an entrepreneur to put a souvenir vending machine at the Riverside Train Station. At that time, the board had some discussion about appropriate placements for the machine, which requires a power outlet. We did have to take a look at the recommended location by one of the board members here, and we identified the cost to install an outlet in that location, approximately $200. I went back to the, to the business, Mr. Souvenir, to see if they would be willing to cost share in any portion of that expense, and they said yes. They further provided me a little bit more information about what the proposed plan is for the machine. I also marked out in the train station physically with some temporary tape to get a sense of what the general massing of that would be, as well as provided some superimposed images within the packet. So I believe, Mr. Maguire? If he is welcome, he can certainly come up and share a little bit more about the proposed plan for the business, and can answer some of the details about what he's interested in doing, and then I can answer any other additional questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Maguire?
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having me here today. Basically, the idea is simple. It's, that train station's beautiful, and I used to take the train there every day. My first job in banking was in Superior Bank in Riverside off of Burlington. I absolutely love this community. So I've sat in that train station thousands of times, staring at the walls, admiring everything. I have an idea where, basically, we put our vending machine in there, right? But it has, not like snacks, more like maybe books from local authors, T-shirts, umbrellas, things that promote Riverside. I want to put an option on there where we offer postcards. And the postcard option is where you can fill it out right there and put it in a little mailbox that's going to be attached to the machine, and we'll mail the postcard for you. So when people come to the farmer's market during the summer, and they're out here during the festivals, they can go in there and drop a little note and send it, and participate in the environment. I don't want to keep it looking like a snack machine. I want to, you know, use vinyl, take a, what's it called? Vinyl printing where you can put it on the outside to make it look nicer, and I'm going to put a little sign on the top that says souvenirs, or if allowed, snacks and souvenirs, and that's a different story. But basically, the idea is to have a 24-hour available thing there for people who visit and people want to remember. You want to have, you know, can have keychains. We could put in local crafts that I can source locally. But that's pretty much the idea.
Thank you. Anything else from staff?
No, it's open for deliberation as far as whether and what the board's expectations are. If there's interest in this, then we would just pursue a, we'd pursue a license agreement with Mr. Maguire to allow for this designated space. Essentially, what the terms would be, would be, you know, up to the board's discussion about if there's a cost sharing of being able to put the machine there in the first place, what that would be within those terms of the agreement. So just looking for a little bit of guidance as to whether there's interest by the majority of the board in this type of use, and then we would proceed with any direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustees? Trustee Gallagos?
So I am very much in favor of this. This kind of fills the intentions of what the visitor center was supposed to entail, and now that the private sector's going to stop, I'm going to take care of this. This is a very nice augmentation. The wall that was suggested at the previous meeting, I think, will be much more appealing visually when we have events there, et cetera. So I think we've come to a conclusion where we're ready to approve it.
Thank you. Other trustees?
I also love this idea. My one suggestion would be to put stickers that you can stick on water bottles in there, like Riverside stickers for water bottles. Yeah, right?
I do have a question to help guide, if there's further support to help guide Mr. Maguire. As far as the use of the village logo, it is trademarked, and so if there is a desire to have something, permit the use of that for specific things that would be allowed in the machine, or if it would be something that they would come up with their own design with the name Riverside that would be generally acceptable for something you'd find here, or something kind of similar to our branding. So just some guidance as for board's opinion on use of our logo.
Jessica, do we have any, any ordinance about the use of our logo right now?
You can't use it. It's trademarked. Only the village can use it.
Okay, and if someone ever came to us and said, I want permission?
You can't, they'd have to get approval of the village.
But is there a standard form that we have for that?
No, because typically, we don't, because we don't want people representing that they're the village, because that could be problematic, you know, depending on what, in what form it's being utilized, right? So we actually had an issue many years back where someone actually outside of Illinois was utilizing the Riverside logo, and we had to notify them that they needed to remove it.
Oh, that social media post?
It was a social media post and word of mouth.
I remember that.
It actually got back to us, yes.
Okay.
I'm not sure I want someone to profit off of a trademarked logo.
So just something similar, but general characteristics that would be natural or similar kind of text, but not our village logo, then?
I don't think we can control that. I mean, I look at all the organizations that use the water tower for, you know, all sorts of stuff since I was a little kid, so it's going to be similar.
I would think that we would not want to just give carte blanche to use it, obviously. But if, but I wouldn't, personally, I would not close the door on Mr. Maguire making a proposal to us, say, hey, here's a specific item, has Riverside logo on it, will you allow me to sell it? And obviously, we would decide whether it's something we want to put our brand on or not.
I agree with that. I'm in support of a limited license, at our judgment, you know, for use limited to what goes in this machine. Certainly, if you expand, we can entertain at that time. I'm sure we could draft something that's withdrawable if we find it objectionable, what it's being stamped on. It seems like a modest use to me. I agree.
There was one question that came up. I wanted to be, the board to be clear about snacks and souvenirs, or just souvenirs, or do people have opinions about that?
So my original idea and concept was just solely souvenirs, because they're non-perishable, they last longer, and they're, it's something that we can maintain and rotate out easier. But my mind's always thinking, and it's always spinning. And I thought to myself, well, what if I was to, because people are sitting at train stations, one thing I did want was snacks. You know, I'm stuck waiting for the train, the metro's not as regular as we would like it to be, so we get a little time to enjoy the station. But putting snacks in there doesn't go with the general idea. But I thought, well, what if I worked with local businesses and got coupons from those businesses, if they're willing to provide them, and attach that to the snacks? So that way, if they buy the snacks, they get a coupon, and it's promoting local businesses. But that's just an idea that came as I was drafting this other idea.
What other ideas do you have? I like that one.
I'm always thinking. My brain's never stopped. I wish it did.
Is there a particular objection to snacks? I guess I'm not sure what we're being, I don't have an objection to snacks. I think snacks are great. I know, I like snacks. I go to the train station, I get hungry. I guess I don't see a downside. I know, I can only think of one other similar machine in town, and it's the mystery machine, and I think that thing sees a lot of business. And so I know my kids with pockets full of change would be happy to put their money in your machine for snacks.
That's good to know. Thank you. Now, one other question. They have a multitude of machines. They have some that are, how would you say, just all non-perishable. Some you can have drinks and combos. We're just saying only snacks, right? Now, I'm just wanting to make sure, like, how can I say this? Different machines, you can have drinks as well as snacks? Are we counting drinks as snacks, or is that separate?
If I can, just my position. I, I'm personally not interested in micromanaging what you put in your machine outside of if there are, if it's obscene or objectionable or not in keeping with the standards. Outside of that, I don't have strong opinions about what goes in your machine. I would agree.
Good to know, because I just want to make sure you get the right machine.
Trustee Evans?
I would like to maybe talk about an agreement of percentage of snacks, like 25% of the space in the machine could be snacks.
The majority is going to be souvenirs. I agree. And I want to put them on the top, most prominent row, where people are going to see it, and they're going to want it, except for the kid's stuff. You got to put that low.
The souvenirs on top?
Their eye level?
The souvenirs on top?
Yeah, the main souvenirs, and except the kid's souvenirs to the bottom.
Perfect. Sounds good.
Any other thoughts? If not based on the comments we've received tonight, I think the consensus is to have staff to continue to work with Mr. Maguire, to put together an agreement, terms of an agreement, that will then come back to the board for final approval.
Yes. Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Staff?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Maguire. Next, under pending business is an update regarding the Groveland Floodwall. Manager Francis?
Thank you. I just wanted to provide a brief update. It was mentioned very briefly at our last board meeting, but I just want to outline the work that's being done as it relates to the next steps of the Groveland Floodwall project. So currently, Army Corps Engineers will be modifying their engineering plans based on the direction that they've received from the village and also the village engineer. In addition to updating the engineering design, Army Corps will begin/resume the Section 106 process. And while these tasks are being completed by Army Corps, village staff has already started the request for proposal process for appraisal companies, and that is for what the required easement is. And right now, Army Corps is evaluating that easement requirement may change slightly. They are talking amongst themselves, and will be providing us an update soon. That was the latest update in which I received. But just to get an idea of what the appraisal process will look like for the different easements, right now, we have to complete our request for proposal process, and so Assistant Manager Monroe is working on that. We plan to have it posted and on the website and out to qualifying firms within the month of March. Then we would anticipate that proposals would be due sometime in May, and then we would expect a recommendation to the board in June of this year. That's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions, Groveland Floodwall?
So I requested this update because it was a year ago that Army Corps was here, and I thought it's good for the board to have an update, and for residents to have an update on progress. So has Army Corps given any hint as to what their timeline they anticipate?
So right now, they're waiting for money from the village, and it's a substantial payment. So basically, how the money is transferring is MWRD was waiting for approval of the agreement, which took place at our last meeting. So they're working on finalizing signatures, getting it uploaded into their system through different authorizations. Once that is all done and finalized, then we can submit our request for payment. Basically, they would give us the payment, and we would turn around and issue the check to them. So Army Corps is waiting for that payment so that they can resume the different pieces.
Thank you.
Any public questions or comments on this agenda item? None? There's no action to be taken. This is simply an update. So thank you, Manager Francis.
Certainly.
Last, under pending business, is a resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement regarding maintenance and improvements to Blythe Park between Riverside School District 96 and the Village of Riverside. Before I, we continue on this, and before I hand it over to staff, we do have a request from Trustee Marsh Ozga, and I will read that aloud. Trustee Marsh Ozga is not in attendance tonight. Says, "I see the Blythe Park IGAs on the board's agenda tonight. I've spoken with Doug, and I think this draft is greatly improved, but I am concerned that it could be amended during the course of discussion. I understand that there are no pending construction contracts relating to this matter that make it necessary to decide this matter tonight, and therefore requesting that this matter be tabled so that I can participate upon my return. Many thanks, Aberdeen." So the request for tabling it, I would say that is up to the board. If someone, if you want to discuss that, or if someone wants to make a motion, and a second, and ultimately, we would vote on whether to table it or not.
If I may?
Yes.
With respect to my fellow trustee, I'm not in favor of tabling this tonight. I think what we have in front of us is a fairly simple agreement, and we have a lot of community interest in this, and so I think the community is entitled to a discussion. I will note, we're all humans, we're volunteers. We can't be here at every meeting, and I'm sympathetic to that, but we do have a trustee missing this meeting and the next three meetings in a row, and so I'm concerned that we'll have an unreasonable delay of this issue. I do believe that the school board has, or the school has an interest in seeing this come in front of them at their meeting on come in front of them at their meeting on March 19th, and so I would be in favor of moving forward with the discussion.
Thank you. Trustee Evans.
Um, I'm gonna vote yes to tabling, just as a matter of professional courtesy, and um, to just maintain consistency, as in, uh, the recent past, we have tabled votes and tabled discussions, whether it was requested or not, and I think that trustee Marsh Ozga deserves the same consideration.
Just as a counterpoint, I did ask that the, the-
That's my statement.
Fair enough. The initial discussion that this board had on this matter, I-
That's my statement.
I had requested that it be tabled, and the discussion proceeded anyway, so we do have precedent for continuing these discussions.
But that wasn't the only time that this has happened. There's other times, like, just as a matter of professional courtesy, somebody has asked for this, and I think it should be considered.
I, I have a question, just for clarification, was that tabling a discussion or tabling a vote?
A discussion.
Okay, so I, I think there's a difference between those two then. Could you reread, uh, trustee Aberdeen's first few sentences, please? What is she actually concerned about? That we would change what has been approved from Parks and Recreation, or that-
She says, paraphrasing, "I am concerned that it could be amended during the course of discussion. Uh, I understand that there are no pending construction contracts related to this matter. Uh, I'm therefore requesting that this matter be tabled, so that I can participate upon my return." Uh, you could certainly discuss it and not vote on it and table the resolution, or you could table the discussion and the resolution, or you could do nothing.
So it doesn't really say if she, if she would have been in favor of it being approved as is? There's, there's, I mean, there's-
I'm not gonna read anything.
Okay, no, 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 I'm just trying to decipher what she was trying to get at, 'cause that would've been a concern, that if we were to vote on it as is, and she would've been okay with it, then there would have been no need for further discussion. If she has some concerns about how it is presented currently, then, then I-
Well, it sounds like she had a concern about it being amended.
That's specifically stated in her email, yes.
Well, I personally don't have any amendments to suggest.
Neither do I, I mean, I did have some, some concerns that were brought up by some of the residents. Um, I do believe that Parks and Recreation did do a very good job of, of addressing many of those. We still have some time to address a few of those other ones, there are some moving parts that are, that are out there, but, um, you know, I wanna make sure that those residents also feel comfortable, which we have time to address those, it's not a land use issue, it has to do with, um, you know, something different. So I, I don't have any, any changes to what is being proposed, knowing that we can change, we can vote it down later on without, you know, a certain approval.
If, if, if the discussion ends up in, in changes, you, you always have the right to make a motion to table it at any point in time.
But we're gonna vote on this upon approval, months down the road, when the school board comes back to us and says, we're gonna have this design, does the village board approve it or not?
Right. Just to clarify, this agreement is an agreement of intent by both parties, where we, uh, we, uh, the village commits to, uh, the way it's phrased in here is, the village commits to building a multipurpose court. Um, and in, in the draft, IGA talks about repurposing the tennis court as a multipurpose court. Uh, and the park district, uh, sorry, the school district agrees to replace the playground. Um, everything, the details of all of that will come back to you for a vote. You're not approving the playground, you're not giving the school district carte blanche to, to build whatever playground they want. Everything has to come back to the village, and it'll go through our committees, and ultimately, uh, to the board. But, so, with that, is there a motion to table this at this time?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second to that motion? Is there a second?
I'll second it if we can specify the date of March 20th.
It's based on, your, is, do you wanna amend your motion to specify March 20th?
Will we have a quorum on the 20th? Because some people do take vacations now.
I do not have anyone missing March 20th at the meeting.
Everyone here is going to be here on March 20th?
I actually don't know if I'll be here March 20th.
Okay.
I'm waiting for-
Understood.
Do you wanna express your intentions now, so we all hear it?
Well, I, I guess my question, I, I mean, and maybe I'm reading into this, but it seems like her objection was if there was going to be an amendment, she was not okay with it. Her issue was with an amendment to the agreement, not the agreement itself. So, it seems to me that we would table this if there was an amendment to the agreement. I don't know.
Well, so, this is discussion on the motion, the motion is second.
Well-
Discussion on the motion.
There was going to be an amendment that we could've discussed tonight.
We, we can discuss, yeah.
And that's what she wants to be here for.
There's potentially an amendment.
Oh, I thought, I thought that, I'm sorry, I thought that somebody had said before that there weren't amendments, sorry.
That's to be determined.
Some of us don't have the intention to have an amendment.
Okay.
Um, but maybe someone does, and will vote on that.
Okay. And she wants to be here for the discussion.
And she would if we are going to, so, I, I do understand trustee Evans' point on having that simply professional courtesy.
Can we table it if someone proposes an amendment?
I, I mean, I would like to-
Sorry, I don't know what the, I don't know what the-
Well, I would like to have a discuss, is your, is your vote to not have a discussion at all, or just not to vote, trustee Evans?
Um, a discussion would be great.
I would, I'd be in favor of having a discussion.
I wouldn't wanna vote without her.
And that way, we can see what everyone's full intentions are.
And you wanna withdraw your motion for now, then?
What is-
For now, sure, I'll withdraw.
In a second, and we'll proceed with the discussion, and, uh, depending on how that goes, if someone, at, just like any agenda item, at any point, anyone can make a motion to table.
Okay.
Um, am I correct in my procedures?
That's correct.
Yeah. So, okay.
Sorry, can I just, on the procedure, at any, at what point can someone make a motion to approve?
At any time.
Any time.
And then I have a question on that procedure. Well, if, if we don't approve it, can it be tabled then for a vote for the 20th then? Or is that then a dead issue? Counsel?
So, we don't, I'm sorry, if, if we don't, if we just have a discussion and then vote to table it until the 20th, we can do that, and we can table it with the anticipation that be a vote for approval then, but it can be tabled-
But if we have a, a motion and a second to approve it tonight, and that motion fails because people don't wanna vote on it tonight, not necessarily that they wouldn't vote on it later on, are we killing that whole agenda item for a certain time?
It does not kill it in perpetuity. If you, if you, there's a motion to approve your resolution, and that motion fails, it just simply isn't approved, but you could have a, someone could then make an identical motion and approve it 10 minutes later, or a month later, or a year later, any one of those is out.
Okay, alright. Thank you for that clarification, counsel.
Okay.
Go ahead, Doug.
We're good. Good to move forward?
For the discussion?
For the discussion. Okay, so, I will, uh, let's see, where am I at? So, Manager Francis?
Thank you. Um, so, within your packet, it includes, so, let's, let's go back to fall of 2024 slash winter. Um, staff had been working with School District 96 with regard to, um, them evaluating some needs as to play space, playground space, and had approached staff with, and, and staff was in discussions with them about, um, how could we make improvements to the, the park spaces? And so, there was an offer made to pay for them redoing the playground space and asking the village to then pay for a basketball court. And so, that was presented to the board, the board asked, um, to get feedback from both preservation and also from the Parks and Rec Board as it relates to various items preservation. It was more of, will additional paved surfaces impact our landmark designation? And asking them for additional feedback on if we were to do a basketball court, where's the best location, what were some of their thoughts and ideas relative to this? And so, Planner Siren is also here this evening, and she can elaborate if there's any questions as it relates to the preservation discussion. Additionally, the Parks and Rec Board had a discussion relative to this item as well, and were supportive of installation of a basketball court. Um, and so, walked you through those different items within the agenda history sheet, as it relates to the basketball court, essentially, in summary, preservation, as I said, um, the installation could potentially have impact on the village's designation. Um, and this is direct quote from the memo, paving green space has a detrimental effect on the designation, the commission prefers to use existing paved areas versus installation of new area. The commission was not opposed to expanding the park, but does not want more paved areas to be added. Um, and additional comments are outlined within the memo. The Parks and Recreation Board were supportive of updating the playground and installing the basketball court as it is in alignment with feedback from the public engagement and survey conducted by Barry Dunn. The Parks and Recreation Board would be supportive of expanding the footprint to include additional equipment. They would also like to have some type of involvement in the design of the new park, including approval and or review of the final design. And a memorandum summarizing their discussion is also included within the packet, and Director Malkiotti is here to answer any questions as well, related to that item. So, the IGA has been revised based on the different discussion and feedback, um, that staff has received. Also, I wanna note, within the packet, we did notify Blythe Park neighbors with regard to the Parks and Rec Board meeting, a copy of that letter is included in the packet as well. And so, the final IGA that has been revised for board discussion is, incorporates that the tennis court would actually be converted, or that space, rather, would be converted into a multi-use court, um, versus installation of a basketball court in addition to having the tennis court remain. Um, additionally, based on some feedback that we received from board members asking about, well, by, if we were to add an additional paved service, would we, surface, would we have to have water retention? And so, in reaching out to our village engineer at Burke Engineering, they did state that we would if it was of the 5,000 square feet, and that water retention will cost approximately $10,000 to $12,000. Um, and so, um, but, that, that type of setup is not incorporated in part of this IGA, the setup that's incorporated that would not require the water retention is repurposing the, uh, tennis court. So, and I also wanna make note, so, if the board elects to take action tonight, this isn't the last time this item would be before you all. So, there's multiple steps, right? So, if the board approved this, then it would have to go before District 96 Board. Additionally, then, we would have to work with our engineers at Burke Engineering to get a contract relative to design of this multi-use court, because we'd be getting rid of the tennis court and building a new court, and they would have to do the engineering that's required for that. Then, once, once we get the approval of that contract, then they're designing it. Then the design comes back for board approval, in addition to, then it would be bid out, we might, may be doing a build, uh, design build with Burke Engineering, but that contract would then also have to be approved by the village board. So that's the basketball, multi-use court, rather, piece. The piece relative to the playground, then, once the agreement is approved, then District 96 would begin their public feedback and their process in which they do for their different parks and playgrounds, or rather, playgrounds that they have on their particular property. And so, in the IGA currently, the village board would have final approval. If the board wants to include approvals or reviews by any other commission, staff would need that direction to make sure that we're facilitating that. Um, also, in speaking with the school district, it was mentioned, President Pollak and I had an opportunity to meet with representatives from the school district, and, uh, had mentioned that perhaps it would make sense for representatives from the Preservation Commission and the Parks and Rec Board to at least be part of that feedback, um, so that they can then share that information with their respective commission and board, um, and they were open to it, in addition to including Parks and Rec staff, because obviously, they'll be the ones maintaining it, doing the annual inspections, et cetera. That, that is all I have.
Thank you. Um, I think there's some, are there people from the public who wanna speak to this item or not? Anyone? Well, hold on a sec, sir, uh, does the board prefer to go to the public before questions and discussion?
I'm ready for the public discussion.
Very good, uh, public comment, thank you, sir, please identify yourself.
My name's, uh, Jim Bernarski, I live at 371 Kent, directly across from where the, this, uh, uh, project is gonna go. I'm totally in favor of the playground rehab and, and expansion, I've got grandkids, they'd love it. But I'm opposed to a new basketball court. Now, if the plan now is to repurpose the existing tennis court, okay, I can, I can, I can live with that. But I, I've got several concerns about, um, putting in a, a basketball court. Uh, one is just the loss of open space. Uh, I, I look out my front windows, and I watch kids playing, uh, touch football, soccer, wiffle ball, throwing, you know, frisbees around. Uh, people walk dogs there. Um, they toss balls and frisbees to their dogs in the morning when I, I look out my bedroom window. I have a concern about damage to the oak trees, there's several big oak trees there. Uh, there's been studies that show that when you bring heavy construction, uh, equipment into an area like that, those tender roots of those oak trees can be damaged, and then you lose those 200-year-old oak trees. Um, I'm concerned about the water runoff. We have an area where, you know, my basement has flooded in the past, and several, several other of my neighbors have. So, now we've got more five, 5,000 square feet of concrete, the water's gonna run off of that, down the, the pitch of that hill and right into the street, and add to the, the, it's not gonna be absorbed by the, the, the ground there. Um, I have concerns about, um, parking and noise, if this gets to be a, a, a full basketball court. Uh, you could have 10 kids playing at once with two half-court games, making a lot of noise. Um, the, the Blythe kids, no, no problem, but, you know, if we're gonna have, during the summer, 8:30 at night, you know, a, a bunch of teenagers out there, I have concerns about the noise that that's gonna create. Um, the, the park is pitched toward the street, so if you're gonna lay a big slab of cement out there, you're either gonna have to dig down on one end, or have a square corner on the other end, in order to flatten it out. Um, uh, concern about balls bouncing out of there, and running down into the street, some kid running after it, and then, you know, the winding streets, you know, it's not easy to see kids, and the, the, that happens at Blythe now, in their after-school program, where, you know, the kids aren't allowed to go after the balls, but they do end up going out there. Uh, as an alternative, I, I added this, if Blythe students need to play basketball at recess, why not use the portable, portable hoops that you could move in, and you'd save considerable amount of funds not building a basketball court? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else, any other public comments on this matter? Trustees, uh, questions, uh, for staff or anyone, comments?
I have a comment. Um, I would like the board to consider an amendment, um, that limits expansion of the hardscape that we currently, currently have. So, um, it would be a, a commitment to, um, repurposing the, the tennis courts, um, so that it can be used for multiple sports, including basketball, versus, uh, creating an entirely new, um, second hardscape. Um, I think that that would be the best compromise for the neighbors, um, for our concern about the green space. Um, and we could even build in some flexibility if we need to expand the current space a little bit, for whatever the design would be.
Thank you. I, I did want, want to say that, uh, the feedback I've gotten on the IGA has been entirely about whether it's a new basketball court, or whether it's a repurposing of the tennis court for basketball and other activities. Um, and I've gotten both sides, I've had people, you know, tell me, yeah, we need both, I've had other people say, no, we should limit it to one. The IGA is drafted currently to say that it is our intent to repurpose the tennis court as a multipurpose court, including basketball. So, uh- So, a motion to approve the IGA as is addresses, I think, what Trustee Evans had just described. If someone wants the IGA amended to keep open the option of two separate courts, then that would, you could do that. So, I think, and trustees please weigh in if I'm wrong, if I'm reading the tea leaves wrong, but I think that is the issue before us. I think everything, from what I can tell, everything else is people are pretty comfortable with it. I'm looking for trustee feedback on that.
That's one of the main issues, yes.
So, what you're saying is, as drafted, the intent is to maintain the size of the existing hardscape? That's what we're being asked for.
It, I believe the way it's phrased, I believe the way it's phrased is that we would repurpose the tennis court as a multipurpose court. It doesn't specifically say that it won't go beyond those borders or be smaller than those borders. Personally, I think the way it's written is sufficient because if we get five times more use by making it two feet bigger, then we ought to allow ourselves to do that. We shouldn't hamstring ourselves. That would be discussed at the design phase. Exactly.
Thank you.
Well, so, there's a new clause in this version addressing attempts to preserve all the trees as much as possible. Are you asking for another clause that asks both D-96 and the playground plans and the village for the court to, at all costs, avoid taking away green space?
No. In fact, what I was asking for is apparently what the IGA says already. Nothing else.
It provides that if we find there's an unreasonable risk, we don't even have to know, if there's too much risk to the trees, we can reject any plans that include that risk. And this is in addition to the inherent discretion that the village board has to reject anything that you just don't seem, feel satisfies the needs of the village.
Well, in my opinion, the way that it's currently drafted, I would not, I would not want an amendment. I think it gives us enough leeway to let them design something. And, you know, like you said, if we need, like, an extra two feet or if we need something that's in there, but we also have, we also still reserve the right to, when that comes back, saying no. We don't like the design, like, it doesn't, it's going to harm a tree, it's going to, you know. I'd like to see, I guess my point is, I'd like to, I like the way it's drafted right now, and I'd like to see what they come up with, and, you know, then when we, when we see that, we can make further decisions.
I agree. As drafted, without amendment, I think it achieves a lot of goals. Manager Francis just listed off a litany of opportunities that we'll have, or this board will have, in the design phase, and our different commissions to weigh in on design and how it looks and address the water. There's a lot of opportunity for that in the future. But I think as drafted, without amendment, it has, it achieves a lot of goals here, right? This is a great example of really positive collaboration with another taxing body in Riverside, and so I appreciate the work done here to achieve that. Let's just state in plain language what we're talking about here. We're being asked to approve an agreement between two taxing bodies in Riverside whereby the other taxing body is willing to spend upwards of five times what we're being asked to spend to provide a playground in a much-needed location. That's plain and simple, what we're being asked to do tonight. It's difficult for me to see how we can object to that.
The other?
I also have no intentions of changing what was drafted as well. I think the only question before us is, do we vote on it tonight, or do we wait until we have a discussion from a trustee who has asked us to wait? And kind of reinterpret what she wrote.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you re, I don't, I also don't want to go forward if she wants to be, if she, can you read it again?
I'm happy to. Again, this is from trustee Marshazka to manager Francis. Quote, "I see the Blythe Park IGA is on the board's agenda tonight. I've spoken with Doug and think this draft is greatly improved, but am concerned that it could be amended during the course of discussion here. I understand that there are no pending construction contracts relating to this matter that make it necessary to decide this matter tonight. I am therefore requesting that this matter be tabled so that I can participate upon my return. Many thanks, Aberdeen."
Okay. Manager Francis, one question. If we do table it, what are the repercussions?
It would just be delayed going to the school district, because there is additional --
The meeting is the 19th, yeah.
So, that would be the one item. If the board gave certain direction, like, yes, this is the path we want to go down, staff can work on, we can request a contract from Burke Engineering for, you know, just beginning the engineering piece of, so, there are certain things that, so it's really dependent on the board. Or we can put a pin in it, wait for to have that final discussion and board action. But really, it just delays it going to District 96.
And I'm sympathetic to their meeting schedule as well, but directly, they could have an emergency meeting, given public numbers, just like we do within 48 hours. Is that right?
Certainly. I don't think this would, this merits an emergency meeting.
Well, and just in their view, I don't know if it would or not. I don't know if they would be like, okay, yeah, we can vote on it in our April meeting.
Trustee Evans?
Well, my interpretation of her request is that if there was going to be amendments, that's why she would want to be here. So, if we're not going to amend it, then we can move forward. Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the resolution approving the intergovernmental agreement. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Manager Francis?
I just wanted to point out one other, it's not, it's a minor thing, but an important thing. And it's within the IGA, and it talks about re-subdivision of property. So, we had talked about not being able to find the plat in the title, and so, basically, the agreement is, so if you'll notice, District 96 has a number of parcels, and they're all individual parcels, and so, basically, Anne and attorney Pickrell and their wonderfulness would facilitate consolidating those parcels on their behalf, clearing out title as it relates to their parcels versus our parcels. You'll notice Amphitheater kind of jets into our parcel, and so, the goal is to consolidate for them to just have their one nice neat parcel, which could help in future if they come before the board for zoning relief matters, but then also it creates clarification moving forward for future boards, both at the school board level and at the village level. So, I just wanted to point that one out.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, Clark Stensel.
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Cos?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion's approved. The intergovernmental agreement is approved, and I want to add on to what trustee Clarity said. This is really a tremendous deal for the village and the school district, and is indicative of our, one of our strategic goals, which is to continue to develop our relationship with our taxing bodies, particularly the school districts. You know, the school district has been a wonderful partner in developing this agreement. Manager Francis and I met with their school board president and superintendent on Monday, went through all this. We had a very productive meeting, and I really look forward to continuing to work with them on this. So, thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda, new business, ordinance amending various sections of Title 10 of the Village Code relating to surface coverage standards. Lanore Siren.
Thank you. The board reviewed this on November 7th last year. The Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing on December 17th and recommended approval of the tax amendments, and the Preservation Commission reviewed the tax amendments on February 13th and found that the tax amendments would not negatively affect the village's status as a national historic landmark. The zoning code already has standards for surface coverage on residential lots. These tax amendments would better define different types of surfaces, pervious, semi-pervious, and impervious, and provide clearer standards for how to measure them with the goal of improving stormwater management. The most significant elements of the amendments are defining semi-pervious surface and creating a standard for the amount of semi-pervious surface allowed on a lot. Regarding semi-pervious surfaces, the standards in the zoning code aren't specific, and they're incomplete. So, the code doesn't specify what a reduced rate or the coefficient of permeability are in the definition, and it doesn't limit how much semi-pervious surface can be on a lot. So, in drafting the amendments, the PCC wanted to answer two questions. One, what qualifies as a semi-pervious surface? And two, how much semi-pervious surface coverage should be allowed on a lot? So, there were two considerations in considering how semi-pervious surfaces should be defined or what qualifies as a semi-pervious surface. The first is that the permeability of those kind of surfaces varies depending on materials, if it's installed correctly, and how much water the underlying soils can hold or filter. So, the standards needed to ensure that semi-pervious materials perform the same or as close to the same as possible on all sites. The second consideration is that permeability decreases over time as the voids get filled with organic matter. We can't assume that the surfaces will be clean and maintained, especially as property changes hands over the years. So, we have to assume that there's going to be some level of decrease in permeability over time. In developing the recommended tax amendments, the PCC reviewed other community standards. The standards vary, but generally, an engineer confirms the permeability of a surface in order to consider it semi-permeable or semi-pervious. Western Springs was an outlier. They provide a specific paver detail that has to be used. So, if you want to have permeable pavers in Western Springs, you have to use this specific detail, and it's only pavers. Other communities also specify a discount rate for semi-pervious surfaces, which I'll cover in a minute. So, after considering the other community standards, the PCC recommends defining semi-pervious surfaces as a surface that retains the first inch of stormwater. This addresses the issue of consistency. All semi-pervious surfaces, regardless of the underlying soil types, must meet the same standard to be considered semi-pervious. It also allows a variety of surfaces to be used, instead of just specifying that, you know, just pavers are considered semi-pervious. It doesn't mean that someone can't install pavers or some other surface that doesn't meet this standard, it just wouldn't be calculated as semi-pervious, it would be considered So, when considering the amount of semi-pervious coverage that should be allowed on a property, the Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed the other community standards. Communities that do have standards for semi-pervious surfaces typically specify that surfaces have discount rates, which is a rate of permeability. So, a semi-pervious surface with a 20% discount rate, for example, would be 80% impervious and 20% pervious. Since most communities have a limit on impervious surface coverage, applying a discount rate to a semi-pervious surface means that they are still calculated towards impervious surface coverage, but they account for less coverage than a purely impervious surface. The discount rates that we saw ranged from 20% to 40% in our research. So, using a discount rate to calculate the amount of semi-pervious coverage allowed has a couple of benefits. First, the discount rates account for the fact that semi-pervious surfaces become less pervious over time. So, if you're considering something to be 80% impervious and 20% pervious, that assumes, because most surfaces when installed, if they meet our standard, could be theoretically 100% pervious. So, this assumes that there's going to be a decrease over time and that the surface won't be maintained. The second is that they incentivize the use of semi-pervious surfaces because they can be larger than an impervious surface. So, for example, with a 20% discount rate, 125 square feet of semi-pervious surface would be calculated as 100 square feet of impervious surfaces. Basically, you get a little more bang for your buck. So, the PCC recommends establishing a 20% discount rate for semi-pervious surfaces. They reached this recommendation after considering what different discount rates would look like on an average property if all of the hardscape was replaced with semi-pervious surface. So, we'll take a look at what that looks like. These are the examples that the PCC reviewed. In these examples, the property has the maximum allowed impervious surface coverage, so the house, which is outlined in black, and the garage, also in black, the drive, which is in gray, and a patio. So, if all of that impervious surface minus the house and garage were replaced with semi-pervious surface, the total amount of hardscape allowed on the property would increase by the area in orange. And so, with, you can see, a 10% discount rate allows a smaller, a 3.2% increase in hardscape going up to 25%, which would allow a 9.7% increase in hardscape. So, what we're looking at here again is the total hardscape that you would see if all of those impervious surfaces were replaced with semi-pervious surfaces using the various discount rates.
Wait, Anne, I'm sorry, you're saying all of the?
So, basically, if we came in --
So, the driveway, the driveways were also replaced with semi-pervious?
So, the idea is basically, discount the orange boxes. If you looked at the site, you've got your house and garage in black, right?
Right. So, those can't be replaced with --
Right. We're assuming that those are staying. So, let's say someone redeveloped a site, because this is an average site, average size, average-sized house.
Okay.
They replace the entire driveway and the patio behind the house with semi-pervious surfaces.
Perfect.
You can have a bigger area, the bigger area is reflected in orange.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Sure. Okay. There's a closer look at the 20% discount rate, which is what the Planning and Zoning Commission recommends. So, they determined that this creates a good balance between incentivizing the installation of semi-pervious surfaces while ensuring the lots with more hardscape, with more semi-pervious hardscape, still look like they fit in the character of Riverside. Here's a breakdown of the examples. This is all of the, and you can see the 20% discount rate highlighted there. The examples that we used were for the R1A zoning district, which is the largest residential zoning district, just in terms of number of lots, but the percent increase in hardscape is consistent for all of the zoning districts. So, the tax amendments are meant to clarify and refine surface coverage standards. They'll hopefully also incentivize the use of semi-pervious surfaces, but they wouldn't change the total amount of impervious surface allowed on properties or allow more hardscape in street yards, for example. Staff is requesting the board's direction, in addition to the motion on the ordinance, on whether a financial incentive should be explored to encourage the installation of semi-pervious surfaces. So, ensuring that they're installed correctly requires the village engineer to review the plans for the surface to make sure that it retains that first inch of stormwater. It also requires two onsite inspections. So, one, when the surface is excavated, to ensure it's excavated to the proper depth, and the second is when the subsurface material is installed, to make sure that that's installed properly. And then, the building inspector will do the final inspection, which is included in the price of the permit. So, considering the additional review and inspections, that would add about $375 to the cost of the permit, assuming that they don't have to do additional reviews or additional inspections. So, staff is wondering if the village board would like staff to explore a financial incentive to encourage the replacement of impervious surfaces with semi-pervious surfaces. One option could be making those replacements eligible for the village's existing stormwater management permit incentive program. So, that program, they currently don't qualify for that program. The program is meant to encourage stormwater management projects through a one-time refund of up to $250 in building permit fees. So, for example, we had a property where someone had a flooding issue, they documented the flooding issue, and applied for a permit fee credit. They installed a rain garden and received a $250 credit from their building permit fees for that project. So, it's a one-time reimbursement of up to $250. So, we would like to know if you'd like us to look into that and come back to the board with a recommendation on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a few other questions.
Any public comment on this before we go to the board? I see none. Let's take this one at a time. Let's take the ordinance itself first, and then we'll visit the incentives. So, questions, comments on the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation for amendments?
It's really well done. Did a lot of nice work on this.
I'm still puzzling why PCC settled at 20%, even though you've explained this over and over again. You said they didn't think that going higher would be in the character of Riverside. How so? How do you characterize that?
Sure. Visually, based on the examples that we provided, they didn't want, so, looking, I think, at the different options, I think they felt that 25% was too much harder. the different options, I think they felt that 25% was, was too much hardscape.
Is there data, or is there anything to back up that instinct?
I, I think it was based on a visual preference of the options provided.
My concern, I had the same questions. So right now, under our current ordinance, if you put in permeable pavers, and they're done right with the drainage and underneath drainage and all that, they're treated the same as grass, correct?
That's correct.
Right. So right now, it's 100%. We started this process, at least in part, I know, to consider ways to encourage permeable pavers. Yet now, we're, relatively speaking, we're significantly discouraging permeable pavers by saying, going from 100% to 20%. Now, I wouldn't think that, have that same concern if we were now at 0%, if we treated permeable pavers as concrete, and we're now allowing an incentive of 20% credit, but we're going the other direction. Now, I know this has partially been addressed by planning and zoning and staff in response to the question I asked, and I think that there's language in there that says, if you have permeable pavers now, they will continue to be treated as 100% permeable, correct?
That is correct.
So it's, it's better than just non-conforming. It's actually, so, and I raised, raised that question because I know personally, and I know other people, we've seen this where they have put in permeable pavers so they could have additional coverage without violating the coverage. So they've relied on that. So, I have some, the same concerns about the 20%. I, I get it, I understand it. On the other hand, is, are we, are we discouraging permeable pavers too much? I think I did see there was a village that treated it at 40% was the highest number.
That, that was an outlier, that's a business district, it's a mixed-use district in Brookfield.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. For the residential areas, it was 20, 25%, 30%.
So that was, yeah, I get it, yeah. So that, that's my concern. I mean, trustees, are there any other issues, or is that an issue for you, for any of you, or?
I need a clarification between semi-permeable and permeable.
Sure. So-
Well, because you were talking about permeable papers versus semi-permeable.
Sure. I, I would say, for the purposes of what we're looking at, you have pervious, and just to, I'm not trying to be too specific, but pervious would be grass, dirt, unimproved area. Semi-pervious would be what we're proposing, and then impervious would be anything that doesn't meet the standards of semi-pervious or isn't grass.
Okay. Thank you.
So basically, pervious is grass, semi-permeable are the pavers that allow water to filter in-
Filter between, yep.
And non-pervious, non-permeable is concrete or-
That's, that's correct.
Or building.
And pebble driveways would be semi?
Depends on how, how they're installed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there's even more caveats.
If we, so for a, a surface, you can have any kind of surface that you want to install. If we know that it was installed to retain that first inch of water, and we can verify that it was designed correctly and installed correctly, we would consider that semi-pervious for your calculations.
Okay.
If we don't know what's underneath it or how it was installed, we can't, we can't guarantee that.
So you can't predict the future, but I'm gonna ask you to predict the future. Do you think at some point this installation will become so standardized that it won't have to go to the village engineer? Because right now, it sounds a bit onerous.
It is. I, I would say, based on my research that I've done, I think the only thing that we could eliminate pot, potentially, is the review of the design standard for the pavers. I think we still need to have someone to inspect to make sure it's installed correctly. From my understanding, the inspection, the field inspections are fairly important. So we could reduce the review of the surface.
It was five years ago this month that, before the world shutdown, we had a special hearing at PCC to approve the Ames redevelopment, and I, at the end of the meeting, I turned to the then Community Development Director and the then attorney, said, "We have to figure out these standards," because a lot of our conversation was, "How do we calculate these things?" And I have to say, at the time, I was thinking, maybe it'll be 50%. So that's why the 20% still puzzles me. It does seem somewhat disincentivizing, but I guess I'm, you know, you did the research, PCC did the research, so if that's what they're recommending, I'm okay giving it a try and see how it works.
Other thoughts?
We're just, if I understand this right, we're just risking a, a less adoption of it. People may throw their hands up and say, "It's, it's just not worth it for a modest gain." So that would be the risk, that people opt for a smaller amount of hardscape instead of slightly more semi-permeable surface.
Right. And I think the Planning and Zoning Commission would say that they don't want people to be able to put that much semi-permeable treatment over their property. What we've seen in the past, on one or two occasions at least, is, let's take these plans as an example, let's say, take away the orange rectangle on each of them, and let's say that you had a property that the red, the brown, and the gray maxed out your permeable coverage. It was a 50% or, that, let's say, for argument's sake, that equaled 50%, but a homeowner came to us and said, "Hey, I'd like to put in a, a patio, or, or I'd like to put in a, a bigger garage. I'd like to double the size of my garage." And we said, "No, you can't do that because you'd exceed the 50%." An option they have now that they wouldn't have here, or would be more limited here, is, right now, someone could say, again, take away the orange, just say, "Okay, I could double the size of the garage. If that same amount that I'm increasing the garage, I turn my driveway into permeable pavers. Now I can increase the size of my garage because I've, I've replaced the asphalt or concrete with the recommended change. If you added 100 square feet of garage to that plan, you would, you would have to, let's say you added 20 square feet of, 25 square feet of garage space, you'd have to replace 100 and, 100 feet of, of asphalt."
Something like that. I can add to math on the fly, I apologize.
Yeah, so, so, probably over-explaining it. So, are we comfortable with it as is, at least try it out? If so, would someone like to make a motion approving the ordinance as is?
Are we approving it, or are we?
Just for direction.
I thought direction was what we were asked for. Consensus?
Uh, no, this is on the agenda as an ordinance to-
Motion to approve.
Well, yeah, the second aspect of this is direction on incentives, and we'll go to that next, but-
Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's, yeah. Terrifies it, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Is there a motion over here? Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion on the motion? Clerk Stenzel.
Trustee Mateo?
Aye.
Trustee Clarity?
Aye.
Trustee Koss?
Aye.
Trustee Evans?
Aye.
Trustee Gallegos?
Aye.
Motion's approved, the ordinance is approved. Now, staff is also asking direction on whether you want to consider financial incentives to encourage the replacement of impervious surfaces with semi-pervious surfaces.
Yes.
Also, yes.
This would come back.
Sorry, just to be clear.
This, this is direction to explore the options, so it would come back.
Yes. I would like them to explore.
Tell us about your real intentions there, trustee Koss.
Unclear.
So consensus is yes, let's explore incentives?
Yes. Great. I'm a mind reader, what can I say?
Thank you. Uh, let's see, is that it? I believe so. A trustee report, are there any trustee reports this evening?
I have a trustee report. Um, I want to let you, everybody know that we are having a presenter from the, from darksky.org come to the library for a C4-sponsored event. Excessive light at night affects our health, damages the ecosystem, and accelerates climate change. So join the Adler Planetarium's Ken Walcheck to better understand the importance of preserving dark night skies, along with the steps we can take to restore natural dark nights. So it'll be at the library on Monday, March 24th, from 7:00 to 8:00. I have attended this presentation in December, and it's very interesting. They'll show us a map of our village, you can see the village hotspots. So I hope, we'll be posting the registration link in the next couple of days.
Thank you. And I, I, this is not president's report, but if you'll allow me, I did want to say one, mention one other thing. Thanks to the generosity of our trustees, the village, the village board will be sponsoring two Little League teams this year, a softball team and a baseball team. So you've all pitched in, and we've gotten enough money to, to sponsor both baseball and softball team. Have our Riverside logo on the shirt sleeve, and they better be a good team.
Congratulations.
We expect very much from them, so, thank you.
Sounds like he's volunteering to coach.
My coaching days are over. Thank you. So, no, no other trustee reports. We do have need for executive session this evening to discuss the setting of a price for sale or lease of village property, and to discuss the acquisition of real property. The board will not reconvene, and no final action will take place. I would ask for a motion and second to adjourn to executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. We are adjourned.